Okay, welcome to the Longdale, um, special, um, meeting for Budget on Workshop. I'm gonna ask the, um, City Cook, we'll get the real call.
Mayor Parkham Swires?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Ford Miles?
Here.
I'm under present.
Okay, um, let me get this together real quick, I was distracted by my neighbor's hot rod. Man, that's loud. One, one, one second. Okay, let's proceed with the first thing on our agenda. I'm sure I have the right one, um. Give you one second. Okay, let's have our ceremonial, um, yeah, let's have our ceremony, I'm gonna ask, um, Councilman Pat Kearney to, um, need us in the pleasure.
Okay, I did it twice, but it's okay, are we ready? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, amen.
Thank you, Councilor. Next item, um, oral communication, um, I'm gonna ask the city clerk, have we received any oral communication?
Yes, for the special meeting, we have received one, um, I'll go ahead and read it, it's from Andrew Chan, resident. My name is Andrew Chan, I reside at forty-five seventy-seven Wetz, one fifty-fourth Street, Longdale, since nineteen seventy-nine. I have some concerns with the proposed FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal budget that has been scheduled for review on six one twenty twenty, and the following concerns are: Compared to fiscal year nineteen twenty fiscal budget, the projection, the projected revenues the new FY fiscal year has an increase of approximately one point one eight million, the projected expenditure went up by four point nine million. As a result, the fiscal budget has gone from surplus of one point eight nine million to one point eight three million of deficit in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Two, as COVID-nineteen pandemic affects all levels of economy in the country, every sector of business was projecting a dismal outlook for the next twelve months or even longer. Economic recovery will be a tough task for state, as the governor has outlined, but his new budget proposes a next fiscal year. How does Longdale City be so sure about meeting the projected revenues? Three, in addition, Governor Newsom has cut his budget by over five hundred millions because of the economic downturn due to the pandemic? How could Longdale City increase its expenditures in such matters? Four, in my humble opinion, Longdale City leaders need to ensure a balanced budget for financially sound organization, and the city staff should make strides to achieve the goal. That ends public comments.
Okay, thanks for those public comments, um, last here from the council, are there any, um, remarks on the public comments by the, um, council? Okay, hearing that, I'm gonna close the public comment at this time, and, um, and council comments, and let's move to item, um, E one, under administration fiscal, um, year twenty twenty, twenty-one budget workshop.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, hi, this is Kevin Chan, City Manager. Uh, just very briefly, before I turn it over to Marla, um, as has been mentioned in other meetings, um, uh, this is a, um, a difficult, uh, year considering, um, what we've been dealing with, with, what all cities, um, in the state, as well as in the country, have been dealing with, with COVID-nineteen, um, and diminishing, um, revenues that we need for our essential services. Uh, as a result of that, um, the council formed a budget subcommittee, which staff has been working with, uh, we've met with the budget subcommittee over four different sessions over the last few weeks, um, and the, uh, budget subcommittee has had to come up with some very difficult, uh, recommendations for the city council, um, in terms of, um, uh, cuts that need to be made, um, as part of fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, in order to realize a balanced budget. So with that, um, I will turn it over to Marla Pendleton, our Finance Director, who can explain and give a presentation as to, uh, what's caused, uh, our revenues to be where they are, and what we need to do in order to, um, again, experience a balanced budget, so, Marla?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our proposed budget is a coll- coll- collaborated effort documenting available resources and use of resources that's establishing the appropriation authority for the year in alignment with city goals and vision. The proposed budget includes revenue, expenditures, and operating transfers in and out. Revenue is based on staff revenue projections, they're based on trended historical patterns, adjusted for known economic variations, they're vetted against projections and funding sources, and available economic projections, that's both contracted economists as well as those that are published. Revenue also includes grants, awards, and then other legal contractual funding commitments to the city, such as our redevelopment, um, obligation payments that come in annually. Our expenditures include personnel costs, full-time, part-time salaries, contracted benefits, required employer-paid taxes, pension liabilities, retiree health benefit contributions. It also includes contractual legal obligations, such as contract services, debt service payments, and citywide insurance. It includes department appropriation requests and capital projects. Capital projects include contract services from restricted funding sources, usually requires city matching funds, and includes allocated personnel costs that are citywide. Operating transfers are to move money from one fund to another. Operating transfers using restricted money held in another fund, example would be, um, if a department is acquiring a vehicle and it wants to u- we would use air quality money, that has to be restricted in a fund, we would transfer it into the budget making the expenditure, so it'd be whole. It would also include portions of collections that need to be segregated and restricted, such as our twenty percent housing set aside. Money comes in through our redevelopment agreement, uh, from the successor agency, um, for advances, the payment of which twenty percent has to be set aside, so we transfer that out of the operating fund into the housing department, where it's restricted for low-income, moderate-income housing. Another, uh, use of operating transfers are for functions that are not fully supported by user charges, such as our community service department. There is revenue for classes and other sources, but it's not completely funded by user charges, so we offset it with general fund support. The development of the proposed po- uh, budget, we combined all projections and requests. For funds with costs exceeding the estimated revenue, we reallocated those costs to other available funding sources. And then if other funding sources were not available, we reduce cost if we were able, or we charge the excess cost to the general fund discretionary revenue to balance the restricted funding sources. So for instance, gas taxes, we had quite a bit of money, not just this year, but in the past, cost allocated to that source, but the revenues did not support all of those costs. So generally, at the end of the year, what we do is it has to be reallocated back to the general fund, because you can't pay expenses with negative revenue, it has to balance. So it would go to the operating fund. We've done that in the past, this year, one of the things we added in the budget is that we actually calculated out the amounts we're expected to come in, and we did that reallocation upfront. So that's gonna be part of our deficit as we go through this, and I explain what makes it up. The proposed budget, I, we identified areas of potential cost savings. We then consulted with our budget subcommittee, which was developed this year, um, because of the shortfalls we anticipated. The budget subcommittee reviewed cost-saving options, and they came up with some on their own, and we developed a plan to balance the general fund budget. And the reason I say general fund budget is because first, we balanced all other restricted funding sources, the only one with a deficit is then the one that has our, our discretionary re- revenue, would be the general fund. And once we received feedback from the effective department directors, we went ahead and made, uh, maybe additional cost cuts in the budget, or made recommendations based on that. We incorporated all of our cost-saving measures into the proposed budget document that was provided for this workshop, and they will be, um, reviewed one by one for council's consideration as a whole. So know that the budget that you got does not include, um, any overruns, it is balanced. So all of our cost-saving measures are already incorporated in it, but we will address each one to make sure that it is council's desire as a whole to implement those cost-saving measures. The composition of the general fund shortfall. So how did we get a shortfall? We had a reduction in our anticipated revenue, six hundred and fifteen thousand, and everything throughout this, just to, to let you know, um, the thousands have been removed, so to make it more easier to read, know that these numbers are in the thousands. So, we re- we had reduced revenue projections, we had increase in expenditures, um, personnel costs that were allocated to the general fund, that's from balancing out of all of our funds, anything that had to go back, three hundred ninety-five thousand, operational costs, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, for a total increase expenditure of seven hundred sixty-two thousand. We had an increase in capital expenditures of thirty-six thousand, a decrease in operating transfer outs of eighty-one thousand, and then other items would include, um, one-time fundings that we don't have this year, that's about eighty thousand, that adds a total of our general fund shortfall of one million two hundred and fifty-two thousand for this fiscal year. So looking at the shortfall in revenue, what is made up? The categories of general fund expenses and how it came up to that total. We had a decrease in taxes, and that really makes up the majority of it, so we're gonna focus on that today, but that's six hundred and sixty-four thousand. Also, with investment earnings, um, going down, because the whole market went down, we're estimating a fifty thousand dollar decrease in investment earnings. Other revenue, twenty-two thousand, license and permits, a decrease of fifteen thousand, and then increases in charges for services, um, traffic fund fines and other transfers, a hundred and thirty-six thousand increase. So netting all of those together comes up with a net decrease projected for the general fund of six hundred and fifteen thousand. Specifically looking at taxes, the largest one that we'll focus on today, we're seeing a decrease in our T O T tax, our transit occupancy tax that has to do with our hotels, six hundred and two thousand, property taxes, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, utility user taxes, three hundred and nine thousand, other revenue, thirty thousand, for a net in- decrease of one million three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Those are offset by increases that we're anticipating, measure L transaction tax, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, motor vehicle and lieu tax, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and sales tax, a hundred and thirty-five thousand. That's for net increases of seven hundred twenty-four thousand, netting into a net decrease of revenue of six hundred and sixty-four thousand projected for this coming fiscal year. Looking at transient occupancy taxes, um, I've trended this back so you can see what the historical pattern is. I went back to the fiscal year, fiscal year eight, nine, ten area. Um, great recession was in the eight, nine area, it hit mostly to government entities where they felt the impact of fiscal year oh nine, so that really is where our starting point is, um, for most of the revenue projections that you'll be seeing. If you notice, from fiscal year nine onwards, we start seeing increases once the great in- uh, recession passed, and we were actually anticipating our all-time high this current fiscal year. However, uh, because of COVID-nineteen and project room key, it impacted our last quarter of the fiscal year for our two largest hotels, so we're anticipating an overall decrease in the year for that. And then assuming, we know, still don't know if we're gonna have T O T for next fiscal year for those two hotels, um, that's a questionable, uncertain item at this point, and we don't know if the intent is to purchase those hotels, will they no longer be operating and providing T O Ts for this city? So that being taken into consideration, that is our six hundred thousand decrease, while we're seeing an extremely low revenue projected for next year in T O T revenue. Property taxes, again, we can look at the fiscal year nine, ten area, that's when we had a lot of defaults in property taxes, you see a very low amount there, about five hundred thousand. You start seeing increases, fiscal year thirteen, you see a huge increase, and that really has to do with a settlement that was added to that income source. So that's kind of a one-time thing. Um, other than that, you're seeing it gradually go up. Fiscal year nineteen, you see another spike, and that has to do with our redevelopment land sale where we bought it, and, um, what we did is once we sold it, the money went to the county, and we got property taxes on that, which gave us a little spike there. Fiscal year twenty, um, we see a little bit of a decrease, part of it, that, that is where we're at this year. It's still, we had a spike, but it's still an increase if we didn't have that spike. Um, some of the money may be shifted, but we should be able to receive it within sixty days and still accrue it back in the current fiscal year. Um, we are told from the county that they had an abundance at the last minute of tax payments, and they were going to defer some of the money coming in until July. So that will, hopefully, will still all be in the fiscal year, we did count it in there, but we are assuming an economic decline for fiscal year twenty, and this is in line with what the economist's projections are as well. So we are estimating that there will be a decrease for next fiscal year. Utility user taxes, um, our biggest increase actually was fiscal year oh nine, and you've seen some little ups and downs, but for the most part, that has been on a downward cycle, um, from year to year, and we assume that the decrease next fiscal year will be similar to the fiscal year twenty decrease of about ten percent, so we do see a decrease in that revenue. Sales taxes, um, we're es- they're estimated based on taxes that are distributed through Febu- through the end of February, 'cause there is a little bit of delay. There are some changes with the sales tax because of the COVID-nineteen and the executive orders that came out. There is a, the March payment, there was a ninety-day extension given to businesses that they did not have to file their tax returns or make their payments until the end of July. And then, July, they will be required to file their sales tax returns, and they will be given the option, um, up to fifty thousand to defer all of their taxes, and not defer, but have an interest-free installment payment plan for one year, which means up to fifty thousand of the taxes can be made, they can enter an agreement, and they can be made in equal twelve-month installments, with the final payment being July thirty-first of twenty-one. That being said, the money should be coming in, except for a little bit of a shift between fiscal year twenty to twenty-one, and that's why you see a decline in fiscal year twenty, and you see an increase in twenty-one that is strictly related to just the, um, ninety-day extension that was given by the executive order. We really don't know what the impact is right now because of COVID-nineteen, we know a lot of businesses are closed. Um, we know that the taxes collected in person are really reduced, however, that being said, a lot more people are buying online, which does generate sales tax as well. Um, when there is economic uncertainty, people tend to hold on to their money more, so it could be that there's less spending, but right now, it's anybody's guess where that ex- exact number's gonna be, because again, there was a ninety-day extension from even filing the returns to determine the amount that was due to us. So that one is gonna be something that we're gonna have to monitor closely, and know that it is, it could change. So again, I said, this one says basically the shifting, the decreasing, um, don't know the amount, it's also very volatile because of these changes. The amount that was shifted, I didn't mention that, um, was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, what was projected by our, by H D L, our, um, contracted service, uh, for sales tax. That's how much they think will shift from twenty into twenty-one. Measure L, measure L also has uncertainty, it has the same type of, um, conditions as sales tax did. It has the ninety-day sales tax extension for the fifty thousand per business, and then the twelve-month installment payment plan for it. We estimated, based on what was received through the end of February, that there would be a four hundred and thirty-four thousand increase in measure L taxes. However, we just received last week a payment for the month of March. Um, based on that, it looks like our decrease for this year could be much more, hundred and seventy-one thousand for this year, two hundred and twenty-three for next year. However, is that part of the fifty thousand for businesses? Was it actually the impact a lot higher than what was estimated by the economists that shift from one year to another, or is that truly a loss in sales tax revenue? Again, we'll have to monitor it closely, and adjust our budget and our information as it becomes more available. Motor vehicle and lieu tax, the historical perspective, as it's been increasing from year to year, we do not see any changes of that at this time for fiscal year twenty-one. We are projecting an increase for that as well. So, basically, tax revenue, some revenue has definite trends, either, either increasing or decreasing. However, um, a lot of it has a lot of uncertainty and validity, volatility surrounding other sources, so it requires monitoring and budget revisions as needed throughout the next fiscal year. So we see motor vehicle taxes, that's definitely increasing, utility user, property taxes decreasing, our T O T tax, sales tax, our transaction measure L tax, those items have uncertainty at this moment, and I can't say we've actually cut them in the budget, we need to see, have more information to be able to say, is it going up, is it going down? Right now, they are trended based on the most current information that we know. Okay, looking at, um, again, we just talked about our anticipated revenue reductions of six hundred and fifteen thousand. We'll next be looking at our increase in expenditures. Under that, we have personnel costs, and we have operational costs, for a total of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand. We'll start with personnel cost of our three ninety-five. So this is our citywide full-time personnel cost. And if you look at it from year to year, we have budgeted last year and this year a total of fifty-five employees for our departments. In fiscal year twenty-one, our personnel cost totaled five million three hundred and forty-five thousand. Fiscal year twenty, five million three hundred and sixty-three thousand. It is a slight decrease of nineteen thousand, our four tenths of a percent. So you're not seeing much difference in the actual personnel cost from year to year. We had a salary increase at the beginning of fiscal year twenty that took effect for the whole year, and that's why comparing it to fiscal year twenty-one, it's the exact same number, pretty, well, it's close to the same number. Our part-time personnel cost, part-time personnel cost has been pretty stable too. Um, the only difference is maybe three tenths of a percent, uh, or three point three of a full-time equivalent, and full-time equivalents are based on two thousand eighty hours, and a lot of our employees might work, they work under a thousand hours. So what we do is take total hours, divide it by the two thousand eighty, and come up with our full-time equivalent, um, for our employees. So basically, um, we have about sixty-eight employees, our twenty-four full-time equivalents, based on the hours that they have. For fiscal year twenty, the costs were seven hundred ninety-one thousand, for fiscal year twenty-one, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. And this is before any type of, just so you understand what the costs were before we made any recommended, um, cuts. So these are all the costs that are in the, that, that we started with. It's a fifty-six thousand dollar change, or six point six percent, and this primarily relates to minimum wage increases. So what's the reason for the personnel costs attributing to the general fund shortage? Well, budgeted department personnel costs in total are not significantly different from year to year, as you just saw in the two, uh, preceding slides. However, the costs are allocated to other funding sources, and that changes, leaving general fund covering more costs. This is what makes up our person, the most significant personnel cost changes. We had increases in street maintenance of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, finance, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, general operations, seventy-four thousand. We had decreases in the city manager budget of sixty-one thousand, a decrease in grounds maintenance of thirty-six thousand, for a net increase allocated to the general fund of three hundred and ninety-five thousand. Street maintenance, the total labor cost allocated to funding sources include gas tax, and then metro funding, such as the Prop C, measure R, and measure M. For fiscal year twenty-one, we, we basically projected costs for the gas tax, and it is going down. And for the metro funding, we were given estimates, and then we were told, based on COVID-nineteen, um, they have to revise them, they're gonna go down, but we didn't get new revised estimates. So what we did is we assumed a ten percent decrease, and once we looked at that, we saw that the other funding sources that had allocated street maintenance costs could not cover all of the costs. So, two hundred and thirty-two thousand had to be transferred back or allocated to the general fund to pick up those costs. So that's what makes up that particular increase. Finance department, we updated our labor allocation for fiscal year twenty twenty-one proposed budget. Last year's budget, um, included only seven percent of the money going of the accounting manager going to the general fund, and seventy-two percent of the director's costs. Most of the costs for those two positions were allocated to the successor agency, the housing authority, and Proposition C. Now, the successor agency has basically wind- wound down, and housing authority, and honestly, finance does not spend significant portions of time in those programs. So that being said, a hundred percent of the director and manager's costs for fiscal year twenty-one are in the general fund. They're not against the successor agency or housing agency, where we don't spend time. So the general fund is picking up an additional cost of a hundred and eighty-six thousand related to that. So the general fund is picking up an additional cost of 186,000 related to that change in Citywide personnel costs, and this has to do with the increase that's in general operations. This is the fund that's picking up costs that do not belong to one particular department. For instance, it's 74,000 in total, but 79,000 of the increase is relating to the PERS retirement contribution that we pay. Retiree health benefits went up 20,000. The PARS excess funding, we have it down for 22, but that's because the proposed budget did not have any allocations for fiscal year 21. I think that actually was an error. We need, we need to allocate some to it. However, I'm very hesitant to add money right now because 22,000 was lost in one month alone in that fund. So I don't really want to add money, good money behind bad money that's being lost at this moment, but we will be required to put more money into PARS to pay the health benefits of our retired benefits, of our retired employees. Our sick leave buyback, basically, employees have to say, out of their balances, they can cash it out once a year, they have to give that balance one year in advance. Those that indicated, it's a decrease of 3,000 that will be cashed out this current year. So citywide personnel costs that are in general operations are up a net of $74,000, or 10.9%. This, just for the citywide, doesn't include insurances such as employment insurance or workers' comp insurance. These will be looked at under operational costs instead of personnel costs. Do I have this one? Okay. City manager personnel costs, it went down because in fiscal year 1920, we had a one-time cost to pay off the city manager's leave balance payoff for his retirement. Because that is not an ongoing cost or anything on the current year, that budget has a reduction of 61,000. Ground maintenance, the number of maintenance employees classified underground was less in fiscal year 21 compared to '20. There was four in fiscal year '20, and there is three in the proposed budget for '21. The one employee difference was classified as street maintenance as opposed to grounds maintenance, so that actually added an increase in that particular budget of 36,000. So that is our personnel. The 395,000 shortfall. Operational costs is what we'll go over next, and that we're seeing an additional cost Operational costs attributing to the shortfall includes the public safety sheriff contract, 313,000, city clerk for election cost, 94,000, general operations, 64,000, and those are offset by decreases in costs for administrative services, 88,000, and then just other miscellaneous decreases of 17,000 for a net of $366,000 increase in operation costs. This is the trending of the public safety contract for the sheriff. As you can see, it has been trending upwards. It's the main reason that we passed, that we asked for Measure 11 and passed Measure 11, is because of these increased costs. For the current year, we are, we received an estimate that the labor costs would go up 317,000, and that's if we leave service levels exactly as is, as they have been in the past, which we are told these are minimal levels. And there is also a liability insurance component that's a percent of labor cost. The city, not the city, the county wanted to go from 11% to 11.5%, a 5% increase, and that would attribute to a $61,000 increase in the liability insurance for a net increase of 378,000 in the current year for the sheriff contract. Now, the sheriff contract is also partially funded by grant revenue. The increase to the general fund specifically is 313,000. Know that there has been discussion on not passing on these increases. A letter was also drafted by our city council asking the county not to increase the costs, but you have to know that the labor costs specifically are related to their bargaining unit labor increases. Liability insurance is how much they pay because of liability because of their officers. So at this point, we don't know if they'll continue to give us those increases or if they will hold them back. Not knowing that they're going to waive them, they are in the budget, the full amount that was given to us as an increase. City clerk increase is attributed to the 2020 primary elections coming up. So that's pretty self-evident, I think. We didn't have election costs last year. This is a one-time thing for this year. General operations attributing to the shortfall is an increase in unemployment insurance, 75,000, increase in property insurance, 22,000, liability insurance, 12,000, workers' compensation, 5,000. That's offset by a savings in contract services because there was a cost put in there, a one-time cost for facility upgrades of 50,000. We didn't use it, and it's not in next year's budget, so that is a decrease netting to a overall net increase of 64,000 in general operations. Administrative services is a decrease. The decrease, that one, and that's netting in with everything else, of course, the decrease is related to compensation and class study that was included in fiscal year 20. Costs are not included in 21. However, if we don't spend it this fiscal year, it will be carried over till next year. That was 51,000 that we put in the budget. There was also budgeted costs for this current fiscal year for recruitment cost for our public works director, 37,000. The net of that is 88,000, and that is actually a savings to the general fund. Okay, next category of what is included in our general fund shortfall is increase in capital expenditures, 36,000. Capital expenditure increase, we plan on citywide telephone system upgrade. That has been delayed several years. We finally got an estimate for it. It is 58,000. We have a decrease because of one-time expenses included in fiscal year 20 for computer replacements. It's not included in fiscal year 21, that's 20,000. And then a decrease in other are the cable TV of 2,000. It nets to an increase in capital expenditures of 36,000. And I'd like to note here that although these are general fund expenditures, the telephone system and the computer replacement, these are actually funded with our U-DAG funding, with a transfer in from that fund into the general fund. So we see it as an expenditure, but there is an offsetting funding source. Next area is transfer outs. That is decrease of 81,000. So that is netting to come up with our total shortfall. The decrease has to do with transfers out of the general fund to community recreation or community services, that's 69,000, and then transfer out for the 20% housing set aside of 12,000, a net decrease, 81,000. And that brings us to our general fund budget shortfall of 1,252,000. This is what we had to ponder. This is what we made recommendations for, and this is what the budget committee came up with, how do we balance our budget and what do we do to get there? Here's a category of all of our recommendations to balance our budget. Recommendations include, number one, reduce citywide costs. We found 32,000 for that. Defer costs where possible, 43,000. Reduce department budgets, 50,000. Identify new funding sources, 102,000. Reduce and eliminate contract services, 238,000. Staff layoffs, 830,000. And then there was a little surplus. If we lay off staff, we would like to use that to boost up unemployment. Insurance, that's a negative 43, for a net shortfall of 1,252,000. I'm going to go through each one of these items. Reduce citywide costs. The recommendation is to eliminate all travel and training. What is put on this table is the total by department of all travel and training coming up with 32,000. This is what is supported by funding from the general fund. To be consistent across the city, we also ask community development and housing to eliminate their travel and training budgets, which is another 10,000, although that doesn't support the deficit in the general fund. It does make cohesiveness among the city and make sure that we're all consistently doing the same thing. There is a $2,000 budget, it's actually another expense account, but that's mandatory human resource training such as sexual harassment, or harassment prevention training. We did not eliminate that because of the liability. It's only $2,000, so this is everything that is within department budget training. Recommendation two, defer costs where possible. There was a contract for the ADA transition plan. The city's manager included a one-time contract cost to identify areas in the city where improvements were needed to comply with ADA standards for accessible design and establish a plan for compliance with those standards. A decision of the committee was to defer those costs, and that is $43,000. Number three, reduce department budget. So we went through, we looked at specific things in department budgets. We saw areas for ground maintenance, 38,000, the senior travel club support, 11,000, recreation uniforms, 1,000, total cost savings, 50,000. And just so you know, these are things that we identified after the fact, but as we were working through this budget, departments also rethought their budgets, and they did decreases as well. So these are in addition to that. Our budget shortfall is after departments actually went through and did cuts themselves. Okay. Identify new funding sources is our fourth recommendation. A new grant, CDBG CV grant, and that's a one-time grant related to COVID-19. Our community development director applied for it for senior activities. We did receive the grant award. The award was $194,000, and it is for costs from March 27th of this year through the end of next fiscal year. So we will be using it for some costs this year. We've identified specific senior activities for next year. There's still a little bit that looks like it may be left over, and we're told that we may be able to carry it forward into the following fiscal year, even though it's one time. So this funding is a reimbursement based on actual costs, so we have to incur the cost to get the funding, and is restricted senior mill program activities. So what we did is we shifted money from the general fund to this new grant source. We were able to identify four part-time salaries for 59,000 that exclusively work on the mill delivery program. The senior fitness classes would be included in the reimbursement, 15,000, and then senior activities. This is connecting with, with workers, various different programs. 28,000 was in the budget. We shifted it to this grant. So we anticipate 102,000 being received as a reimbursement for the year and shifting these costs from the general fund to this new funding source.
Marla, question?
Yes.
The travel club, could that be part of that grant?
You know what? I didn't think it could because it's more activities, and I, I don't know. I think we can call and ask, but at my first site, it didn't look like it was part of the cost.
Okay.
But we can see if it could be expanded for that.
Okay.
So at this point, I didn't include it. Doesn't mean that, maybe we'll find out down the road that we can add it, and if so, we will ship those costs to it.
Okay.
Number five recommendation, reduce or terminate contract services. The contract services include park agreements with the Longdale Elementary School District. The recommendation is to terminate it. Longdale beat, reduce it from two to one route. Unarmed security service agreements, terminate that agreement. Tree trimming, pruning, and removal services, reduce those services, and school crossing guard services, terminate. I didn't put the amount because I'm going to discuss each one of these individually. For the parks agreement. Well, looky, looky, it's not here. Okay. No, I'm sorry, some of my screens messed up at the last minute, so I don't know if it got out of sort or if it deleted it. The parks agreement, the city has a contract with Longdale Elementary School for three of our parks. We have six in total, three are joint agreements. When we went through these agreements, we discovered that it requires a one-year advance notice to terminate the agreement. So estimated services include water, tree maintenance, electricity, trimming trees, that's about 130,000. We have part-time staff at the parks. That would come up with a total of 250,000 for the parks. However, the fact that we cannot, and that's funny, my next screen has it now. I saw something else, and I, now I see a different one. Okay, so here's the costs. Again, 132 total costs, tree trimming, landscape maintenance, building management, water, electricity, 132 operational costs, part-time, 120, 252 in total. The three parks we have is Roger Anderson, Jane Adams, and William Green. So again, one-year notification. So any budget savings for fiscal year 2021 is out of the question with the advance termination notification needed, but this is in our recommendations that'll be in Wednesday's meeting, to consider providing that one-year notice, and if so, it'd be future cost savings, though it will not help with this next year that we're, we're dealing with. Reduce or terminate contract services, reduce the Longdale Beat Service. The Longdale Beat Transportation Service operates two daily fixed bus routes in Longdale. It's a residential route and an express route that goes on our main boulevard. It's funded by Proposition A Local Return Program. 491,000 is budgeted for fiscal year 2021 for the two routes. Reducing service would have no impact on the general fund because the funding is Prop A and it is restricted, but the motion is included on the sixth, on the June 3 special meeting agenda to reduce services, and if that is the desire of council as a whole, to provide direction for use of that funding, because then we would have additional available The third one under reduce contracts is to terminate unarmed security services. On January 6th of this year, the city entered into a two-year agreement not to exceed $51,000 for unarmed security services at the Harold E. Hoffman Community Center. at the Harold E. Hoffman Community Center, City Hall Courtyard, Veterans Memorial Hall, and the surrounding parking lot. This contract can be terminated with thirty days' written notice. The cost savings would be twenty-six thousand, and it was removed from the proposed budget. So that is something that's up for consideration to continue with the recommendation of the subcommittee. The third contract is the tree trimming, pruning, and removal services. This is to reduce services. The tree trimming service is an existing contract that was amended for a three-year period, July nineteenth through June twenty-second. The proposed budget is year two. Annual contract amount is a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand. The services alternate between the main boulevards, east and west side, every other year. It includes pruning, trimming, removal at city facilities, parkway trees, and street median trees, the metro link right away. The interim public works director believes a one-time decrease in service can reduce the cost of the eighty thousand dollars by assessing the maintenance schedule and the condition of the trees. So that is something to be recommended. Again, it would have to look at, how do the trees look? The type of trees, how quickly they grow, and can they hit and miss some of them? We wouldn't just eliminate an entire street or an entire part of the plant for the current year. It would be specific trees that definitely need maintenance. School crossing guards. The school crossing guards, there is an existing contract for a two-year period. It is from August eighteen to June of 2020. So it expires specifically on June twelfth of this month. Services are for ten crosswalk locations during regular school sessions, and the locations are designated by the Landale Elementary School District, according to the contract. Estimated 2021 costs are a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. This was removed from the proposed budget to balance. All locations that the crossing guards are at have traffic control devices, except one, which is directly in front of the schools where parents and teachers are present. So removing this particular item saved the general fund a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. So this is an overview of everything that we just went over. The terminating the parks agreement, zero impact on current year general fund. The Landale beet would be zero on the general fund budget. Unarmed security services, terminate that, twenty-six thousand. Reducing the tree trimming services, eighty thousand. And then terminating the school crossing guard services, a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, for a cost savings of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. Next recommendation to balance our budget is layoff of staff for eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Staff layoffs, the recommendation is for part-time staff, five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. Full-time staff, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, for a total savings of eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. The department most affected by COVID-19 restrictions was our community service recreation department. So looking at community services, it has personnel costs, nine-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. Operational costs, two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. Appropriation requests, one-million-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand. Estimated revenue, and that was assuming business as usual, hundred-and-fifty-three thousand. And then, net cost to the general fund, and that is an operating transfer from the general fund to community service rec, one-million-thirty-six thousand dollars. The new reality for the recreation function. With parks being closed, social distancing causing canceled city events, counseling classes and programs, canceled facility reservations, much thought went into the new reality of the department, the programs, and the programs that could be provided and overall restructuring. Revenue estimates for the recreation function required reductions. The summer youth basketball and the summer day camp, money would have already had to been collected. Programs would have already been in process. So we know there's no revenue that's coming in for those sources in this fiscal year. The community center is not open, so our rental reservations had to be reduced. Projections were reduced to nine months of revenue. So three months were taken out of the projections for this current proposed budget. Classes and programs, again, are not in session, so three months were eliminated from the proposed budget as well. So our budget was revised for the 2021 year for a hundred-and-fifty thousand less than what was originally included in the budget for this coming year. This is the restructuring idea, the proposed community service organization chart. Basically, it's flattening the organization chart somewhat. We have the community service director providing basically the overall administration, the management of the department, with an administrative assistant to supporting the accounting, the revenue, you know, preparing the payment vouchers, that type of thing. We have three activities under it. We have senior activities, recreation, and then community. Senior activities consist of the mill program. Those positions include the senior nutrition specialist, which is full-time, and then four rec leaders. Those are fully funded by CDGB and the new CDBG-CV grant. So that's fully funded, that whole program. We've got contract classes under there, no personnel required. And then the travel club, which requires, based on the agreement, a staff person to travel on anything that's overnight. Recreation, we're planning to basically condense that somewhat. We have the six parks, three city-owned and the three joint school district ones. The plan is to operate those, open, close, and monitor the parks with two rec leaders. Before, they had full-time staff at them, so we want to reduce that to just two, where they are rotating and monitoring them. For the gym, we rent that from the school district. Contract amount is twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred a year. And once that is operational, and I say when, because of course, it's not open right now, but when we need staffing, what we would intend to do is have evening, weekend, holiday, and when school is out, the operation, two part-time rec leaders funded for that. For the youth day camp, and that would be the winter camp, that would be for basically monitoring events. Recreation leaders, we would need four part-time. Then we have the Mackenzie Community Garden, there's one part-time staff for that. If we go over to the community section, we have the transit operator, full-time. That is fully funded by Prop A, so there's no general fund impact there. And then facility reservations, reception, three part-time rec leaders for that function. So we did take into consideration what positions we have now, what cuts we can make. This was discussed with the community development director, and this is the proposed new organization chart. So what does this new organization actually mean? So our recommendation is basically to lay off all part-time staff, with the exception of those that have specifically been identified. So what would happen is everyone would be laid off, and then as the functions, and I say as they're needed, because not all are needed immediately. So for instance, for winter basketball at the gym, once the gym opens, then the winter basketball season starts, then you would need part-timers. So based on that, when people were needed for the functions that are budgeted, they would be recalled based on seniority and based on, you know, what the MOUs say. And the hours and dollars are proposed not to exceed what's put into the budget, and that's what the new organization chart. So looking at what we think would still be included in the budget. The transit operator with Prop A, nine-hundred-and-eighty hours for twenty-three thousand dollars. And then the rec leaders for the CDBG-CV, the new grant funding, and the old one, three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty hours for fifty-nine thousand. So external funding for the part-time positions would be eighty-two thousand. Then what would be supported by general fund are the rec leaders in the new proposed organization chart. That's for eight-thousand-ninety-three hours for the entire department. You saw it was quite a bit of area that they're covering, for a hundred-and-twenty thousand. We also recommend retaining a cable TV production assistant, because we only have one full-time in that capacity, and that person does need assistance when they're not in, and that would be twenty-one thousand. So the general fund would support part-time costs of a hundred-and-forty-one thousand only for the part-timers. And the budgeted part-time salaries in total would be two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. So out of the part-time affected by our layoffs, this is the total amount of savings. This is what would be impacted specifically. It would be a cable TV production assistant, that area. And I say, it could be multiple people, so I'm just using the position category. Thirty-eight thousand savings for that. Code enforcement officer, thirty-one thousand. Municipal service officer, two, twenty-three thousand. Emergency prep coordinator, twenty-seven thousand. Office assistant, and that's actually three different departments, before thousand. Maintenance worker, one, twenty-two thousand. And then the rec leaders, senior rec leaders, three-hundred-and-eighty thousand, for a total savings of five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. So all of these have been discussed with the department, and plans basically developed, how would we have consistent coverage so that we maintain the service, have weekend coverage? So all that's been thought out, and this is what we're recommending as a part-time cut.
Marla, this is Pat again.
Yes, that, of course. Go ahead, Pat.
With the council knowing, when we start to bring these people back, I'd see the code enforcement officer back and the municipal services officer back for the weekend duty, because they're the two people of all these cuts that actually generate revenue for the city. So before we begin, rec leaders back, I'd see these two come back first, because they do generate revenue for the city on the weekend with tickets, parking enforcement. So that's just my comment.
I did talk, well, we did talk to the municipal service director, and I know he's on the line, about if he lost the positions, how would he cover? And basically, he wouldn't eliminate the weekend service. He would basically take his schedule and not have a fix all the full-timers on the weekdays and the weekend part-timers. He would basically make their schedules to where people would be working also on the weekend, so we wouldn't lose revenue, we would still have those enforcement services in place. It's just everybody wouldn't be working all the same hours. They would be flexing hours throughout the week. So there would still be coverage there.
All right.
Okay? Okay.
Marla, I have a quick question for you. Actually, I did have that same concern that Councilman O'Carney brought up, and we'll see how the discussion goes, because I'm kind of concerned about code enforcement on the weekend. And I wouldn't say that these individuals bring revenue to the city, but I would say that the amount that's brought in by code enforcement unfortunately exceed the amount that we're paying them, and it helps to, obviously, to bring the city properties into compliance or whatever the code enforcement defect is. So I'm concerned that, you know, we know that the weekends, prime time in the city of Landale, for code enforcement violations, and I want to make sure that we do have that coverage and we don't just simply ship people from, that would otherwise be doing code enforcement on weekdays, and ship them on the weekends, because either way, there's gonna be a moment where, or a block of time where they're no longer doing code enforcement. If they go from two days from the weekday and ship those two days on the weekends, there's still coverage, a coverage gap, it seems to be. My other concern... Go ahead.
I was gonna say, pardon me, Mr. Mayor, this is Michael, municipal services director. I can speak to that a little bit if you're finished with your comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
What I was gonna say is that, as Marla said, we would still have coverage seven days a week. We would simply move the two full-time code officers to working one weekend day as part of their regular schedule. So Jamie, for instance, would do it Sunday through Wednesday. But having said, Greg would do it Wednesday through Saturday. But having said that, the service levels probably will diminish a little, because, you know, having one person writing tickets is less than two people writing tickets.
And that diminishes a little bit is what I'm concerned about, because as it stands right now, if you want to say that we're forced staff, I mean, I'm just for a second conversation, if we're forced staff, there's a lot that needs to be done that's not getting done. Obviously, we do have some budget restrictions, I'm obviously keeping that in light. But as you just kind of said yourself, there will be a gap either way, either how you put it, and that's what I'm concerned about. But thank you for that comment. My other issue or concern, Marla, that I wanted to take a look at is that, you mentioned on the, going back to community services. Did we take a look at what happens if we no longer have a director of community services? It doesn't sound as if we have a lot of programs, at least not in the next fiscal year, a lot of programs in the department. So what would happen if we did not have a director and maybe had a coordinator and a supervisor, just a coordinator, I'm not really sure, and the department is moved under the human services department for the next fiscal year? Because other than the meals program, I'm only seeing one program that really requires, I guess, management, sort of speed. Obviously, there are other budgets that the manager would do, not the manager, the director would do and things of that nature. But I'm just wondering, did we take a look at that configuration?
When you say under the human services, what department are you...
Well, I meant to say under the assistant to the city manager, who just happened to also be human resources.
Oh, okay, under that. You know what? What I'll do is continue to go through what we've provided today. Anything that you have comments on, if I could get specifics, I can work up numbers so that when we discuss it on Wednesday's meeting, I can give you a thorough analysis at that time, because we're not voting on it today. So if there's other options or other considerations, I will happily pull that information together for you.
Good idea, Marla.
Robert, this is...
Peckern?
Yeah. So if we eliminate the director, we'll bring back the senior, what are they, community service coordinator? That's what it was, like Carrie was? Because we have mostly senior programs. And this question's for Marla, if we bring her back, is she funded under that? Any portion of hers funded back to that fund, one-ninety-four?
Um, let's see, I don't have it right in front of me right now, but I know there's a portion of some of those positions, very small portion, but some of it is under, one is under Prop A and some of it is under CDBG. The only amount, because you are gonna see, since they're not on this chart, you're gonna see them as soon as I hit the full-time layoffs.
Okay, because I like Robert's suggestion. I'd like to see our senior program come back and have her report directly to Ray Led as HR Assistant City Manager, whatever she title is.
Okay, I'll explore this some more, and I will come up with what the differences and costs are for you for Wednesday. Still? Okay, we ready to resume? Get back to where I was. Let's see, where was I? Layoff recommends, oh, that's where I was, okay. So we just finished, no, I didn't get to that one.
This one.
Sixty-one was where I was, okay. So that's everything that we would be laying off.
Next one, that's mine.
This is by department, the total for the 575, the positions, I'm sorry. Okay, this is the recommendation based on the chart that we saw for community services. The recommendation was for full-time staff layoffs. Lay off all three full-time staff from community services. Utilize part-time staff as needed and identified in the restructure plan. So the positions that were specifically identified for layoffs is community service supervisor. The savings to the general fund, and some of it is, I believe, Prop A, but the portion that's related to the general fund is $89,000. Community service coordinator, $85,000. Recreation, I'm sorry, recreation coordinator was partially funded by Prop A. That one is $81,000. The total savings to the general fund for full-time positions that are recommended to be eliminated are $255,000, that we will be analyzing to see the impact if it's the director. So this assumes this savings is on the general fund, assuming that the layoffs occur this fiscal year and any payoff of leave balances are done in the current fiscal year. If not, the savings would be reduced by the payoff amount, so that you're, you know, fully understand the amount. Okay. So layoffs of staff, as we said, part-time, $575 as recommended, full-time staff, $255,000 as recommended, for a cost savings of $830,000. So back to recommendations to balance budget. So reduce citywide costs, that's $32,000, defer the cost, $43,000, reduce budget, $50,000. Identify the new funding sources, that was the CGB grant, $102,000. Reduce, eliminate contracts, $238,000. Staff layoffs, $830,000. And then offset by, because of the layoffs, increase unemployment insurance, $43,000, and that then balances our proposed budget, taking out $1,252,000 from the general fund budget. Based on that new amount now, where are we at with general fund reserves? This is our calculation for general fund reserve. We start with the last audited restricted fund balance, restricted being anything that's not restricted, you can't use it for the current budget, or it's not available, it could be a receivable amount. So our last audited unrestricted fund balance was $7,520,000. We're projecting that there is actually going to be a, the expenditures are going to be less than the revenue for the current fiscal year, based on our projections that we just provided, that we just did. $112,000 decrease. Assuming with all these recommendations, if they're put in place, you now have a zero budget, meaning it balances completely, revenue equals expenditures. So our unrestricted fund balance at the end of the proposed budget would be $7,408,000. The general fund expenditures for, that are in the proposed budget is $14,012,000, which means our reserve is at 52.9%. Our reserve calculated for the proposed budget last year was 61%, so we're seeing a decrease in it, because last year we actually had more revenue than expenses in the budget. So that's where we are at.
Okay, can you speak to the number, you said the reserve balance is 52.9%? Can you speak to, in industry standard, as to the health of a city when they have 52% reserve?
You know what, 20 or 30% is considered very strong for local government. We're at 52.9%. Our council says they want a goal of 100% and thought we had that in the past, but the calculation was not unrestricted, it was also money that wasn't available. So looking at this, the 52.9%, although it has decreased from last year, it is still very healthy. But.
Okay.
I've been cut.
Not the butt part.
I'm sorry?
No, I was just joking, I said not the butt part. But go ahead.
Okay, so the butt is this, there are a lot, a lot of uncertainties surrounding this year. Uncertainties being things like our transit occupant, not our transit occupants, that's an uncertainty, but additional things because of like the CARES Act, where they're trying to make it easier on individuals, on businesses, so they're deferred payments longer. That reduces our cash flow and maybe even money to us. One of the things that I heard two weeks ago, I got a letter, an email, from the county of LA regarding our obligation bond, the amount that was supposed to be distributed the first of June. And they said, because it wasn't all fully collected, the remainder wasn't collected timely, that they would do a calculation and they'll distribute to us next January. That's seven months late. This is for debt service obligations that we have to pay regardless. They took over the redevelopment agencies and the promise, and they made us go through a lot of hoops to say how much debt we had. It got approved. Every year we get approved how much is coming back to us, based on the taxes that are due to us, that would have all been to us automatically, but they're holding it and giving it to us based on how much is approved by the state controller's office and the auditor controller every year. And now they're telling us they're going to delay it seven months. Well, that seven months, if it's anything like the property tax payment that we just got last week, that was 60% short. 60% short of that one payment is $700,000. That's a lot of money for our budget. So even though we've got higher reserves, we're going to need cash flow, because I keep seeing things getting delayed and, you know, a different, a lot of unknown things. We don't know what's going to happen with sales tax. We don't know if we've cut enough on our gas tax. You know, at first I went really conservative, and then when I started looking at the Economist estimates, they were estimating a little bit more. So I didn't want to say, we've got to lay off everybody in the city, I want us to have some money. So I didn't go as conservative as we could have. I said, you know what, let's not take these huge hits, let's just keep monitoring it. Maybe we'll have some more hits, but maybe we'll be surprised and have some increases too. And maybe they'll net out. So I tried not to make it as severe as it could have been. I want to make sure that it's reasonable, that we can manage the amount that's being cut. So just so you know, that's, I take it very seriously when I do the budget, because if it's too much, that means we could overspend and bankrupt us. If it's too little money that we're allocating, we could be laying off people that we don't need to and damaging their lives, you know? This is serious either way. So to me, it's not too much or too little, there's a fine line. We have to be in the middle when we do this, when we do the budget, because it could hurt either way and do something, you know, that we don't want it to do. So we need to keep our reserves, because there's a lot of uncertainty, and we need to manage our budget a lot closer this coming year, closer than we ever have, because of this uncertainty, so that we can act and not let things get out of control that we can't come back from it. So that's one of my commitments to council, is that I will be managing this a lot closer this fiscal year. So just so you know.
Thank you for that. And I thank you for not, for letting the county know that we don't appreciate them trying to hold up our funding for the seven months by sending them a letter. My understanding is that we had our attorney to make sure we sent a letter to them saying that these monies are money that are already due to the city, and that we expect immediate payment, remittance. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
There any, you're welcome. Are there any comments on the presentation?
I just want to thank Marla for quite a big chunk of work you just went over. That is a huge task to go over all those numbers, and especially in this difficult time. And I'm sure we're going to have a even difficult session on Wednesday with these choices that we're going to have to face. But again, I just want to say thanks to Marla for her job well done on it.
Thank you. So as you see my next slide, it says, that goes into our next slide. Special meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, 6 o'clock, and that will discuss each budget recommendation that we've put here. So there's a motion for each, because I don't want to just say, adopt the budget as is. I want there to be discussion, and I want us to jointly agree on what the goals are and what we're cutting. So that's where we're at.
Okay. This would be the one that, I guess, what I'm looking at with the 11 recommendation, no, 13, 14.
Back. And that's for Wednesday.
That's for Wednesday, okay.
So between now and Wednesday, if there's other things that you want cost estimates for, let me know. Things to consider, so that we can bring it into the discussion and hopefully adopt the budget. If there's changes, that we get direction on what those changes are, and we can adopt it with those changes Wednesday.
All righty.
Okay, if there are not any more questions, any further questions from any of the council?
No questions, it was a long process.
Thank you, sir. Okay, okay. With that, I guess I would read this adjournment. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Landale City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, June 1st, which happens to be today. And so we would join, or we'll be back, I should say, at 6:30 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.